Absolutely. Counselors, Beedenbender?
Here.
Crocker?
Here.
Cullum?
Here.
Dagwan? Flores?
Here.
Rap Grissetti?
Present.
Hebert?
Levek?
You.
Neary?
Here.
Schnep?
Here.
Stein-Hilber?
Here.
Tinsley?
Here.
Wallace?
Here.
We have quorum.
Thank you ma'am. Clerk, may I also make a note that we're going to see Mr. Counselor Hebert a little late. He called in and told us that. Thank you. In accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20, I'm inquiring whether anyone is recording this meeting, and if so, if you'd let your presence be known to me at this time. Seeing none, I'd call for the pledge allegiance and a moment of silence. Thank you all for joining us tonight. I would like to suggest that the public comment portion of the evening is available. Anybody who would like to speak to the council, please come forward, write your name on the pad, and say hello. Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion of the meeting. Thank you all for joining us, though. Obviously, we can pass on the council response to public comment, and that brings us to the town manager communication portion. Please, town manager. Certainly, we got him so fast, he's got to queue himself up here.
Sorry for the delay. That was quicker than I expected.
Always nice to see you, Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you. This is the Town Manager's update for the period of March 1st through March 7th. I usually start with a budget-related item, but tonight, I thought I'd start a little bit different. I live on Craigville Beach Road in Centerville. My wife and I walk quite frequently down to the beach, and last year, there was a new nest of osprey just when you pass over to the south side of the Centerville River Bridge. You know, unfortunately, when they do that on top of telephone poles, there's the risk of the nest igniting, or the wind can get it, et cetera. That's what occurred at that particular location, so we inquired to our Natural Resources Department. So I am very pleased, not only as Town Manager, but as somebody who, you know, enjoys all that we have here on Cape Cod. Chris Knappy, our Natural Resources Officer, has been working with Eversource to install new osprey platforms in areas of concern. They've installed four platforms to date on Church Street, Craigville Beach Road, that's this one, Route 28 and 149, at the intersection of Route 28 and 149 and Short Beach Road, and are working on more in anticipation of the spring nesting period. So, our fire departments get called out during these, and they try to rescue. They end up having to tear them apart, the nests, and it can be quite a problem. And so, I just want you to know, our Natural Resource Officers are out there trying to protect our natural resources, but also work with Eversource so that we create a safe environment. So, I was excited when I got these photos, so I thought I'd share this one on Craigville Beach Road with you. We are proceeding with the tasks and the budget action calendar. The FY 2020 is scheduled. The FY 2020 capital budget and the 20 through 24 capital improvement plan has been submitted to the Town Council and posted on the Town website under the Finance Division, FY 20 and Capital Improvement. It's also on the homepage. Town Council will conduct their first reading of the 2020 capital budget orders on this evening, and a second reading beginning on April 4th. Mark Mill and I will do a brief summary of the FY 2020 capital improvement budget when the items are taken up under new business. We continue our discussion with Fish and Wildlife regarding the future potential to site water supply wells on the 250-acre parcel owned by the Commonwealth that directly abuts the Hyannis Public Water Supply. Town continues to work with Mass Fish and Wildlife to finalize an agreement that would enable the town to install public water supply wells on the 250-acre Hyannis Ponds Wildlife Management Area. We submitted our recommendations, recommended proposed public water supply well locations and associated withdrawal information on January 18th. Following the January federal shutdown, Fish and Wildlife informed us about USGS delays in proceeding with the review, but we have been in continuous communication, and we are tentatively scheduled for March 18th week for our next meeting. So, hopefully, we'll come out of that meeting with some very specific answers about the potential to locate wells, and how many wells, and have a better answer. We're still holding with, we basically bumped everything 30 days originally. We were looking at the end of March. Now, we're trying to conclude this by the end of April, as to whether this is a viable opportunity to continue to pursue. More than 235 students attended the job fair hosted by the Barnstable Youth Commission, and for the first time, we transported by bus students directly from Barnstable High School. I wanted to pause there and just thank our youth commission. I want to thank our Town Council and Town Council Leadership and Counselor Cullum, and I want to thank our staff. You know, it's Lynn Poyant's department that oversees through Patty Machado, and they've just done a phenomenal job. You know, this isn't the first year, but we had record numbers, and I'll go on a little bit to share that with you. But it was well received, and everything I've heard has been positive about what occurred yesterday. We had students from Barnstable Intermediate School, besides our own high school, Sturgis East and West, Saint John Paul, Saint Francis Xavier, D-Wai, Mashpee Sandwich, Cape Tech, Cape Cod Academy, Trinity Sandwich, and even students from North Attleboro came down. We want to thank our many partners in this. Executive Suite did job coaching and other support. Cape Cod Regional Transit Authority was there to talk about being able to access public transportation here, especially when young people are trying to get to work. And I just want to thank all the local businesses who participated, and in this week's newsletter, we go through and specifically thank all of them. So if you have a chance to view that, you can look at everybody who participated, and we encourage more in the future to participate. It was a great event. 235, I think last year, we had 136. So, great job, by all. There's an open house for the Route 28 and Yarmouth Road Intersection Improvement Project. MastDOT invites the public to join them at the Hyannis Transportation Center on March 27th. There'll be two sessions. First is from 11 to 2, second is from 5 to 8. Attendees will have the opportunity to learn about intersection improvement, design details, construction timelines, and traffic impacts. Project team will be available to answer any questions you might have related to the project, and the goal of this project is to improve safety and traffic operations by providing a complete street to better accommodate motorists, bicyclists, and pedestrians. Currently, there are numerous deficiencies within the project area, including traffic operations, intersection geometry, access signal phasing, bicycle and pedestrian accommodations, and emergency vehicle prioritization. Proposed project will address these concerns while improving operational efficiencies and multimodal access. So this is, we all know that we're still in the latter portions of the Bursys Way Route 28, and that's a federally funded project. This is as well, and this one's coming up next. So, not only should this be an informative effort, it should be, in a general sense, one that's on everybody's radar moving forward, because we've been waiting a while to see these funds come, and they're actually a part of a much bigger look from end to end, from the west to the east end of our town along Route 28, and it's our intention to go the entire length and see traffic improvements, you know, occur. I know we've had many on the west end as well that have been identified. So, we'll continue along those efforts, and we hope all will participate. And it's a little bit different one, but, you know, it's one of our service areas, certainly for our community. In an effort to keep in step with the changing demands in the cemetery industry, we're looking to come forward with a more environmentally responsible cemetery development, and the Town of Barnstable Cemetery Program is identifying new burial areas for what is called green or natural burials. This rising trend of green burials parallels an increased concern for the environment. So I've attached a draft proposal. A lot of people are opting for very different approaches. Cremation was one that came in. Now, we're all used to that, but a couple decades ago, it wasn't that common. And now, they're looking to go back to more natural ways to be interred. So we're trying to keep ahead of that market, and we know that our residents are already asking for it. So I thought before we bring forward, I said, "Bring it to you as a draft, to take a look at, make comments, and before we move forward programmatically with any formal proposed changes." So, please take a look at that when you have a chance, and I very much appreciate your feedback, okay? The Town of Barnstable is hosting a community planning event to explore how we are impacted by our natural hazards, and to develop a comprehensive strategy to reduce potential risk, improve our ability to recover quickly after major hazard events, and improve our overall resilience. Through the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Process, the participants will explore current and future vulnerabilities to our infrastructure, community, and environment resulting from natural hazards and changing climate conditions, and develop and prioritize municipal and community response actions. During this MVP workshop, participants will work with local and regional leaders to characterize the hazards facing the community, and identify community vulnerabilities and hazards, identify and prioritize potential community actions, determine overall priority actions for our community. This workshop is a product of the Town of Barnstable's participation in the Commonwealth Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program, and provides support for towns in Massachusetts to plan for and implement projects that mitigate the impacts of climate change and natural hazards. Communities that complete the MVP program become certified as an MVP community and are eligible for state grant funds and other opportunities. So interested participants should register on the Planning and Development website. You can go in there under MVP Project Website, or by calling here at Town Hall. You can also access this through the Cape Cod Commission. So we hope all will follow this effort and attend if possible. And finally, I reported to the Town Council last meeting that I had attended a meeting of legislative state agencies and municipal officials to discuss the implementation of the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund. Our specific discussion focused on the Act's establishment of a management board and its duties relevant to the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund. And within the Act, Section 20, it states, "There shall be a Cape Cod and Islands Water Protection Fund Management Board that shall consist of one person to be appointed by each Board of Selectmen or Town Council in each municipality that is a member of the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund, provided, however, that an appointee of a Board of Selectmen or Town Council shall be a member of the respective appointing authority, a town manager, town administrator, or other municipally-employed professional staff." And I encourage the Town Council to appoint said board member expeditiously to assure that Barnstable is formally represented. And attached is a draft resolve. That's the second to the last page in your attachment tonight, for your discussion. I've also attached a matrix illustrating action taken in other communities participating on the board. So, I thought you may want to see what other communities have done to date. I know that it is under discussion by all, but I don't know that action has been taken by all, so. I've also brought the council, to the council's attention, the duties of the board is stated in the Act, and specifically, the management board's duties. Once you have a board, once you appoint a board member, the duty shall be limited to determining the method for subsidy allocation, including but not limited to an equitable distribution among participating municipalities consistent with the revenues deposited from each municipality into the fund, and ensuring that the money from the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund is spent only for the purposes in Section 19. And I've said before that that's specifically that the DEP, I believe it's BMF, but I think it's even more broad within the DEP, determine that you have appropriate plan, and your projects are eligible, typically under the SRF program. I will note that I just got the document today, and all of our projects that were submitted this year, including the sewer expansion, are listed and eligible, again. So that's good news. So I'm confident that when these funds become available, we will see those monies, as determined by this board, coming back to us. You also remember that the opinion of our bond counsel was that the board has greater discretionary authority to redistribute said funds. The original question was, is it just a matter of accounting for money in, money out, or what is this, including but not limited to equitable distribution of funds? And it was our bond counsel's determination that the board does have discretion. It isn't dollar in, dollar out. At the meeting referenced above, there was a discussion regarding an opportunity to modify the Enabling Statute, as the Governor, Mathers Vineyard, and Nantucket have already suggested changes. Therefore, if there is an opportunity to modify this regulation, we should submit proposed language changes as deemed appropriate by this Town Council. And I offer the following changes. I did not look to strike this. That would be one approach, certainly. I looked more specifically at, if this exists, what might we do to make sure that we are equitably represented on the board? Right now, it is a one-for-one vote, regardless of how large of your community's contribution is. So thinking along those lines, and it's not limited to this suggestion, these are just two ways that I thought you might want to consider. I offer the following changes for your consideration. Seek a legislative change that provides the governing board a weighted vote, or at least a supermajority if amounts awarded exceed the amounts contributed by a given community in the fund. We could also look at completely changing the language. I haven't spent a lot of time, at this point, looking to do that. I had asked, and I believe that it was approved, for your consideration and discussion at this time on these last two items. And so, that's the end of my Town Manager's report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Manager. Any questions on the first series of articles brought forward by the Town Manager? Yes, Counselor Rap Grissetti?
Hi, I, thank you, Mark, for the report. I have a comment more than a question regarding MassDOT. I'm always asking for MassDOT to do cleanup on our roads, and Route 28 is a mess and needs to be, the trash needs to be picked up on it. So, I'm asking you, in your capacity, to remind them, District 5, that they need to step up their cleanup efforts, especially on 149 and Route 28. Okay?
Yes, I would hope that, I will do that, and if they don't respond, I may bring back to you before I proceed, but not unlike what we did at the airport rotary. We have too many people coming to our community and passing through our community to allow it to be, to allow no response. Okay? We have, what, 40,000 vehicle trips on that road? That might be the only perception they have of the Town of Barnstable, and leaving it that way is unacceptable, and we will not do that.
Thank you.
We will also communicate back the costs that are associated with that, and try to recover those if we have to do it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay? Thank you.
Any further discussion? Yes, Counselor Wallace?
With respect to the four platforms that have been put up for the osprey?
Yes, sir.
The new Lombard Field has, you know, very state-of-the-art lighting system, and ospreys have set up a nest there, too.
Okay. Thank you.
It would be nice. If we could keep those birds in the neighborhood, we'd love that.
Absolutely. I'll call it in, and if anybody else sees them, email me, whatever best means of communication is, and I'll get it on our list, and we'll work toward it. Yes, sir.
Yes, Counselor Cullum?
Yes, thanks for the report on the job fair. That's excellent news. It's nice to see that we're going beyond Barnstable, too, that there's some interest from other high schools. I just wanted to ask if you could remind us, for the youth summit, I know it's next Friday, the 15th, 9:30 to 1:30, is that correct, at Four Seas? Can you just tell the public, please?
Sure. I think you covered it just then.
I wasn't sure if it was right or not, but I just wanted to make sure, 9:30 to 1:30?
I believe so, yes. And you're all invited, if you have the time. I think they're going to meet Lynn Poyant, are they going to meet in the Tilden Art Center? Is that, yes?
Grossman-Carmen.
Grossman-Carmen, sorry. Thank you. So if you have time, they'd love to see any and all attend. Thank you.
Any other counselors? Vice President?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. Just a comment on this green burial-related issue. The fact, you know, as a trustee at the community college, we have just brought on the Funeral Directors Program that was at one time at Mount Ida College. We've absorbed that, we're going to approve by the state. It's an accredited program, so it seems to me that as the Town of Barnstable, where the community college is located, there should be maybe some kind of communication between the two, because, to be quite honest, as we looked at, as I looked at the curriculum, there was no mention of green burial. That's a new term, a new concept to me, as of this evening, so it would be good to communicate. I plan on doing it with the President Cox, but it might be good to come from the town as a whole, if we're looking at that down the road.
I will.
Yeah, and secondly, the issue of the water management plan in terms of that 2.75% that's going to go into the, that's going to go into the fund, I for one want to speak vociferously in terms of supporting that, A, the body become weighted in terms of the size of the population of a particular community, similar to what the Assembly of Delegates represents, and secondly, that I do believe that it should be a dollar in, a dollar out. So the monies that are raised through that tax by the Town of Barnstable should be retained for the Town of Barnstable, whether that's done legislatively on the Senate side or the House side, that's something that we'll have to take a look at, but I want to go on the record of supporting that.
Excellent. We can, at the leadership's direction and the support of the council, we will move in any and all appropriate, but I think we need to do it quickly, because we're more than a month out from the offer to make modifications. That's all. Yes.
Any other counselors, before I open the discussion on the appointment to the Protection Fund Management Board? Okay, two things I would like to ask. I would like to know if we are in support by some voice vote of asking that a fair share comes back to Barnstable on the 2.75, because as he points out, that needs to be written, and hopefully included in the governor's addendum. With a voice vote, all those in favor of Barnstable getting a share for a dollar in, dollar out, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you very much. So we will, you and I will work on that language. The next, I believe that this should come forward to the council for nominations, so I ask that it be drawn in the vacant opening, and I would like to suggest, if anybody needs any further description of what we're looking for in a person, that we have that discussion first, or we could go right to a nomination, and then have a hand vote or a voice vote if there's nominations. Everybody have a clear understanding of what the job title would be for the appointment of Barnstable's member to the Cape Cod and Islands Water Protection Fund Management Board? Okay, I'll open it for nominations? Yes.
Mr. President, I nominate Dan Santos to serve in that capacity.
Thank you. Any other nominations? Yes. And seconded, thank you.
Yeah, I would nominate that we resolve that we appoint our Town Manager, Mark Els, to that position.
I second that.
And I have that for a second? Okay. Any other nominations? This is just to fill this in, and next time, it'll come before us, filled out as a order of the day, but I didn't want to fill it out without anybody, everybody having some say in the matter. Okay? I'm sorry?
We're not going to discuss tonight.
No, we can discuss, because we're trying to find the nominee who we intend to put in here for the order of the day, so, sure, if you'd like to bring discussion forward.
Well, I want to ask our Town Manager, do you accept, do you accept that, and how do you feel about serving in that capacity? I mean, I nominated Dan just because of his knowledge, but I don't want to put the burden on any particular person, so I'll defer to you.
I'll share my logic of why I recommended either the Town Manager or a Town Counselor for the initial appointment. It's a three-year appointment. Certainly, you're, any of our directors are professional staff, as well as assistant, myself, counselors, are all eligible for the board. My belief is, when a group like this is forming, it isn't just the technical issues or the financial issues, it'll be much more than that in discussion, especially if a part of the discussion is potential modifications to the Act. So, it would be my belief that you would be best served by your Town Manager or a Town Counselor in that capacity. After the first appointment, I believe that it could very well be your Finance Director, your DPW Director, Assistant Town Manager, Counselor or Town Manager. But I think the first three years are critical to the board forming and being functional, and I think it takes that level of representation, quite honestly. So, that's, but again, I'll be 100% supportive of whomever you select.
If I may follow up on that, I guess, well, I can't withdraw my nomination until afterwards, but I will withdraw it, because as was stated in the Act, you're not determining which projects get funded. So that's actually Dan's, you know, bailiwick. So, it's more the determining the rate of subsidies, so, anyway, I'll withdraw my nomination.
Thank you. I guess I would ask for a withdrawal of the second as well?
Second.
So I have a withdrawal and a withdrawal of the second on the nomination, so we have a singular nomination on the floor. I would like to point out, you withdrew your second, am I correct? Yes, yes. Raise your hand, I'd be happy to acknowledge you. You ready? Counselor Wallace?
I'd like to nominate Andy Clyburn for this position.
Do I hear a second? I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you, Andy, for your service, though. I will point out, just on some factual items that are put forward here, there are 21 towns that will be involved. Right now, we have a feeling, or at least an acknowledgement, that We have a feeling, or at least an acknowledgement, that eight have appointed and two are choosing town managers. Everybody else is choosing someone from the political board, so it seems to be one or the other is all that we're seeing going forward here. In my own position of preparing for this and understanding this, I just want to remind everybody that when Mark joined the board, joined the town, he actually joined us at the sewer committee, so he's had a longstanding understanding and history of sewer, he knows our projects in and out, he's involved with our new projects as we go forward, and he certainly is gonna gain my support on this, but that's my two cents worth. Anybody else want to say anything before I ask for a voice vote? Yes, Councilor Cullen?
I just think we're really lucky to have such a qualified group of individuals. We're all up here thinking, well, it could be the finance director, it could be the guy at the DPW, it could be all these people who've had so much experience with this town moving forward and studied in so many different ways, and we're in a really fortunate position, and I think we need to be really thankful for that.
Very good point, because when we had a councilor's select my meeting, I pushed the idea, are we just looking for a bean counter, or are we really looking for someone who understands the job? Because I would have felt completely different if it was a bean counting position, and I would have thought our treasurer, Mark Milne, would have been more than appropriate for it, so, or director of finance, I should say. So you're absolutely right, the job description is what's bringing us all here today. We're gonna fill this out and bring it forward as an order. Any further discussion, or should I call? Yes, please follow up.
I once saw Mark Milne in BJ's counting coffee beans, and I just want to make sure everybody knows that that was an actual thing that happened, and he might deny it, but I was there, and I actually, I think I got a picture of it, because it was unbelievable.
A true bean counter.
Yeah, it's true, it's true, true story.
Very good. Vice President?
Just a comment, one of the other reasons that I nominated Mark is also that he interacts on a regular basis with our legislative body, and if we are gonna move anything forward in terms of getting something done and changed within the law, you already know sort of the cultural kind of environment that you have to work through and what those particular issues might be, so I just wanted to add that as another reason why I nominated him and for my support.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? On a voice vote, to bring forward as an order for our next meeting that may be acted on, I bring to your attention the appointment of the Barnstable member of the Cape Cod and Island Board of Protection Fund Management Board, and ask that we appoint the nominee of Mark Els as this position and bring it forward in our next meeting. All those in favor? Any opposition? Any abstentions? Perfect, we'll move that forward in our next meeting.
Thank you.
Let the record reflect that was unanimous, please. Mr. Vice President, may I ask that you bring forward the minutes of the day from the meeting of February 28?
Yes, I would like to submit for approval the minutes from the February 28, 2019 council meeting, as written.
I have a first and a second. Any discussions, any amendments? Yes?
Just a scribner's error, I believe the attorney for 720 Main Street was Dan Creedon, Creedent, I believe.
Scribner's error, please, thank you. Town clerk? Any further discussion? All those in favor of accepting the minutes with the scribner's error on February 28, 219, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstention? Please post that as unanimous. We are very fortunate to have with us tonight, is Charles around? Yes. One of our fine attorneys, who will introduce his classmate, Attorney Charles McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President, Attorney Charles McLaughlin, Assistant Town Attorney. For the record, one of the hot items that we have been dealing with eliciting a lot of emotion is the give and take regarding wireless issues, and it is clear from correspondence among the municipal bar that as 5G is soon to be deployed on every telephone pole in the Commonwealth, I think, that we have only begun to see what the interactions are going to be between neighbors concerned about the issues that we've already seen announced and enunciated, and beyond that, where the towns can go in attempting, in spite of, or in light of, a very, very strong position asserted by the federal government that we play a very small role in it, that, what role we can play in front of a court if it gets to that point, and how we position our examination of these issues when these matters are pending before us. The opportunity to do so is getting more narrow rather than broader, and we thought in light of this and in light of the controversy we have been involved in and witnessing, it was appropriate to bring forward someone that we've had a chance to work with on a couple of different projects over the years, Attorney Alan Mandell of Boston. Alan is an attorney with over 30 years of experience regarding cable, energy, and telecommunications, regulatory, and transactional issues. He's a graduate of Boston College Law School, and he is currently of counsel to the Boston firm of Farida Scobo and Rota Field. Since 2011, he has served as a part-time assistant city solicitor for the city of Newton, where he specializes in municipal cable, energy, and telecommunications issues, and has been involved in the development of the city's small cell wireless programs and grant of location procedures and standards. He's a former Assistant Attorney General for the Commonwealth and formerly the chief of the Utilities Division. He's also acting president of Wayland Community Access and Media Incorporated, a nonprofit public access corporation. If you don't hold it against him, I will reveal that we've known each other for over 40 years, and we are classmates from Boston College Law School. Pleased to introduce Alan Mandell.
Welcome, Alan, you're welcome to stand, you're welcome to take a seat, whichever you think is more comfortable for you. Thank you for making your presence here tonight.
Well, thank you very much for having me. There was actually a nice segue to my presentation, which was the Osprey stand on top of the pole. So I found it aesthetically pleasing. The, as you know, the wireless industry has changed over the years. It started out as a brand-new industry in the early 1980s. There were basically two competitors within a geographic area. The competitors had to be certified by the state, they had FCC licenses, and when they began to build their networks, the very first cellular one network was eight towers. And as demand for wireless services grew, and as they needed to extend their coverage, we saw more towers, we saw within geographic areas what they called cell splitting, where more towers would be added so that the frequencies could be handed off, and you'd get more usage within that area. Since then, there's just been a huge demand for wireless service, and I think everyone's familiar with it, you know, the growth of cell phones, smartphones, data services, video services, you know, it's just become part of the culture, and the wireless industry, you know, has, again, in part created the demand by having the infrastructure to serve it, you know, and of course to market it, it's very lucrative to market data and video on top of the voice services. Where that's led us to is the need for the wireless industry to, you know, fill in gaps in their systems, you know, you've seen it with towers, there are numerous cases where wireless carriers come in and ask for additional tower locations based on a gap in coverage. What we're now seeing, again, because of the heavy demand for data and video, and just people with multiple devices, a single person might have five wireless devices, the, in order to meet that demand, it's not feasible to continue to multiply towers, there has to be some way to provide not just coverage, but serve capacity needs. So we're seeing infrastructure beginning to be deployed in places where I think no one ever imagined it, and that would be utility poles and the public ways. The industry has been touting 5G service, we've all heard about it, it's going to bring us enable driverless cars, the Internet of Things, smart cities, there are a lot of different ways that 5G is being marketed way ahead of its actual availability. But nevertheless, the, these various factors have led to not only the changes in technology, but also changes in law. Going back to the 1990s, there were statutes enacted to promote the availability of wireless service, I'll get into some of those details. In 2009, the FCC issued what's called its shot clock order. What it did was establish, if you will, deadlines for municipal action on wireless permitting. If there were a co-location, that is adding wireless to where wireless was already located, there was a 90-day period to issue a decision for a new tower, 150 days. Those were presumptions, the presumptions are rebuttable. If there's a good reason why it has taken longer to issue a decision, then the municipality can avoid being held in violation of the shot clock. Also, the FCC and the industry have allowed what are called tolling agreements. Parties can agree to extend the shot clock, again, by mutual agreement, and that's been used quite frequently to allow more time to consider wireless permitting requests, and, you know, in most cases, no one wants to go to federal court over one situation, you know, additional time may benefit both parties. Doesn't always, but it's an option. Since 2009, there have been a series of FCC orders which have only made matters worse from the municipal standpoint, put it bluntly. There's one that came out in this past September, which I'll be discussing, which has, is a potential game changer, but, any event, so, like most municipalities, one doesn't always have bylaws or regulations that are, that have kept pace with these changes in law, just isn't in the nature of things, and so what's been happening is a lot of communities are either enacting bylaws or have just scrambled around or trying to do this now. They're, in Newton, I'd say after a good three years of, you know, trying to deal with this issue, trying to get some consensus amongst city officials, finally in August, there was a set of wireless procedures and standards for grants of location that was adopted by the city council. A month later, the FCC issues an order, so we're, in some respects, we're back to the drawing board, there are things that are gonna have to be revisited, you know, just, again, just based on a change in law. So I think the starting point is really, how is wireless permitted now? What are the different permits that, what's the different permitting authority within the town? There's certainly different locations, there are the public ways, there are private ways, there's private property that's not a private way, you have pole attachments, depending on who owns the pole, you know, that's a, if it's a private utility, that's one thing, but if it's a governmental body, then that's an area that has to be looked at. So there's the Cape Cod Commission, there are a lot of things that kind of intersect, and I think one of the first orders will be to just identify and establish a baseline, you know, what do we have now, and what's the process, what are the standards, and, you know, what do we need to do to try to catch up with federal law? It used to be that when there was something like this, municipality could impose a moratorium, you know, take a timeout, you know, we need to spend six months developing wireless standards. On August, the FCC came out and said, sorry, you can't do that. A moratorium would be considered an effective prohibition of wireless service. So they've not only barred an express moratorium, they've also barred what they call de facto moratoria, which I think extreme examples would just be a municipality that's slow-rolling the process, you know, someone has been, someone filed a permit three years ago and they still can't get a hearing, you know, there are innumerable requests for information, the process drags on, and at some point, the FCC is gonna say, this is a de facto moratoria. So those are, those are off the table right now, and that heightens the need to try to address these issues in real time. One of the, one of the first areas is public ways. It may not be a pressing problem now, it's hard to know when wireless carriers are going to start proposing that. I think in Cambridge, Massachusetts, there's been a lot of activity in that area, certainly in big cities like San Francisco and Boston, there's been a lot of that activity. In Newton, we've just seen, I don't know, less, probably less than a dozen, but the pace has picked up a little bit. So with, with the public ways, we have two statutes in Massachusetts, both under Chapter 166, Sections 21 and 22. They authorize certain parties to put facilities in the public way, as long as they don't incommode the public use of the public way. Then under Section 22, authority is granted to municipalities to issue permits for the placement of utility facilities in the public way, which would include wireless. There, under Section 22, there are some, some construction requires a public hearing and notice to a butters. There are other types of construction that are, where the notice and public hearing are discretionary. Then there's one class, you know, such as just swapping out an existing part where, you know, no grant of location is needed, nor can it be required. Those are the, that's kind of a high-level view of the procedures. The information I prepared, I mean, I'm working off of an outline, just to try to keep things brief, but there's a very detailed document that goes into this stuff in more detail, and I'm gonna, I'm happy to go into any particular thing in more depth if you have questions. The, under state law, there were certain things that municipalities can regulate when it comes to the public ways. Some of those are set forth in the statute, there, you know, things like the height of poles, the location, those types of things. But also, under case law, the courts in Massachusetts recognize the authority of municipalities to base their decisions on aesthetic considerations. That came up in the context of utility transmission lines, not wireless, but it's the same statute, and at least as a matter of authority under state law, municipalities do have the right to take into account aesthetic considerations, and, you know, that's an important factor. So my general advice has been, you know, when looking at this, it's necessary at this, uh, it's necessary to have substantive standards that, uh, are consistent with your authority under state law. You know, that would include things like public safety and aesthetics. Um, I've included in the materials, uh, kind of a long list of, uh, of items. Happy to go into any of them, you know, if, uh, uh, if there are things that you want to talk about. Um, but, uh, the list was put together after reviewing, you know, a number of bylaws and ordinances in other places, and then trying to extract things that were consistent with, uh, authority under state law. But, you know, it's not to say that all of them are necessary or desirable, but, but that's a, a pretty good sample. Um, the, uh, and there are many, there are many bylaws and ordinances out there to look at as starting points. Uh, there, there, there's, there's a lot to choose from or to look at. Um, outside of the public ways, we have a couple of situations. Private ways, uh, where, uh, it would appear that there are easements needed and possibly some zoning law that might apply. Uh, and then, of course, zoning law would apply to, uh, the placement of wireless facilities on private property. Um, you know, you're, you're familiar with the zoning law standards. I'm not going to get into, uh, into those. Um, and, uh, uh, but, you know, certainly zoning has been a, a hotbed of litigation when it comes to towers, and, uh, uh, less so with, uh, attachments to utility poles, but there has been some of that. Uh, I should add that some communities have regulated facilities in the public ways under zoning laws. Uh, I never quite got that, but, but they do. Uh, we have a grant of location statute. That seemed to be the, you know, a better route, but, uh, you should know that there are some others that don't, don't follow that. Um, so the, we now have this kind of collision between, uh, state authority and federal law. Federal law recognizes municipal authority to, uh, regulate uses of the public ways, uh, but they, uh, they've placed a bunch of limitations on the exercise of that authority. Um, first, uh, there can be no unreasonable discrimination among functionally equivalent services. There's some case law as to what's a functionally equivalent service, um, but that's, that's the statutory thing. There can be no prohibition or effective prohibition of the provision of personal wireless service. Uh, effective prohibition has been litigated to the hilt in the context of towers. You know, you're familiar with, uh, standards like, uh, did the, did the applicant develop a significant gap in coverage? Uh, did the applicant conduct, uh, such a thorough site review that it would be fruitless to bother looking for additional sites? Uh, many, many cases on, on, uh, on that standard. Um, we talked about the shot clocks and the need for a final decision within a reasonable period of time. Um, the, uh, there's some procedural standards. Uh, any kind of a denial has to be in writing. Uh, it's supposed to be supported by substantial evidence and a formal record. Uh, so from a procedural standpoint, that's a federal requirement, but it's also consistent with the way grants of location have been handled. They're, they're considered adjudicatory proceedings, and, uh, uh, so that, that shouldn't be a major change in practice, but it could be. Uh, and, uh, one that has gotten a lot of attention, uh, there can be no regulation of the, uh, placement, construction, or modification of wireless communications facilities on the basis of environmental effects of radio frequency emissions, uh, to the extent that the facilities are in compliance with, uh, the FCC's regulations. Um, this comes up very, very frequently, you know, as you know, uh, there's a great deal of public concern about radio frequency emissions. Uh, the FCC standards were adopted a number of years ago. Uh, they opened a proceeding six years ago to consider whether to update them, and that proceeding's been open for six years with no action. Uh, in the meantime, uh, I think Europe has adopted more stringent standards. Uh, the literature on this continues to grow. Uh, there, I think there's just a great deal of mistrust, uh, on what, what the federal government or the wireless industry has to say about this. You know, it's, it's hard to prove or disprove this stuff, and, uh, so it's an emotional issue. Um, the, uh, the shot clock regime and, and these applications, uh, the FCC has imposed some procedural requirements. Uh, once an application is filed, a municipality has thirty days to review it for completeness. If it finds that the application is incomplete, it notifies the applicant in writing, identifies what information is missing, and points out the specific requirement under local law that, that calls for that information. Uh, the applicant supplements its app, the shot clock stops, the applicant supplements its filing. The municipality then has ten days to, uh, say whether the application is now complete. Uh, that thirty-day period's important because, uh, let's say you identify one element of incompleteness, and five days later, someone takes a second look at it and says, whoa, you know, this, they didn't give us this information either. You're, you're stopped from asking for it. You have thirty days to, you know, make your case for incompleteness. You can't ask later. Uh, you can't raise new grounds for incompleteness. Uh, so it, it puts a burden on municipalities i- in this review process, just to make sure that, uh, it's getting all the information that it, that it feels necessary. Um, we've run into difficult issues on the scope of hearings. Uh, federal case law on this is all over the place. I know you've gotten, uh, an opinion from town council on, on this issue. Uh, some courts have said the locality has to base its decision on local law. It can't, it can't base its decision on what it thinks about effective prohibition. Uh, there are other cases that say, well, maybe, maybe the municipality ought to make some findings on that, although we, we as a federal court don't have to pay any attention to it. We, we decide the thing, uh, on, on our own record. Uh, so it, it creates a, a little bit of tension in terms of what to do and what not to do. Uh, some communities, uh, I think, approach this, uh, or if the permitting body has jurisdiction to issue a permit, but decides that it, it shouldn't for, you know, valid reasons, it can create, uh, an exceptions clause, you know, that if the applicant comes in and demonstrates that, uh, a denial or imposing a particular requirement would effectively prohibit wireless service, uh, then an exception might be granted. Uh, that, that's in a lot of zoning bylaws. It's, uh, by no means uniform, but it's something that's been used, uh, is one way to address that type of issue. Um, the, uh, the latest major news is this, uh, September twenty eighteen order on small, small wireless facilities. Small wireless facilities asked to find by the FCC. You may not consider them small. Many, many people would not consider them small, but it's a, it's a, that's the definition that the FCC has adopted. Uh, I've put it in the material so you can see what, um, what exactly constitutes small wireless facilities. Uh, this is the FCC's response to a, uh, attachments in the public ways. You, you can't apply the same standards that you apply to towers. There's no significant gap in coverage if you tell someone they can't go onto a telephone pole. I mean, it's just, that's just not a, a realistic standard. So they've come up with some new standards. Uh, it's anyone's guess whether they've overstepped their authority under federal law, but what they've said is, uh, uh, effective prohibition means to materially inhibit, uh, and materially inhibit network densification through small cell deployments, the introducing of new services, or otherwise improving capabilities in existing services. Um, so there's got to be some judgment on what's, what, what's materially inhibiting any of these things. Uh, it's, uh, it's uncharted water, but, uh, that's the standard that is going to be applied. Um, the other thing the FCC has done is they found that municipal fees, uh, can constitute an effective prohibition of wireless service. Um, you know, the industry comes in with anecdotes about exorbitant fees being charged in this community or that community, and how it's, uh, it's, you know, cutting into their capital budgets, they're spending all this money on fees, and then they can't deploy because, you know, they've been overcharged in Boston or San Francisco or wherever. So the FCC bought all that, uh, no surprise, and, uh, what they've done is they, they established, uh, fees that they consider presumptively reasonable. Um, if your fee, uh, is at or below that level, uh, the FCC will presume it's reasonable. I think all that does is put the burden on the carrier to challenge the fee. Uh, conversely, a municipality, if it thinks it has higher costs, can do cost studies and come up with higher fees. Uh, I think that can, that can readily be done. Um, the, there's a little bit of uncertainty about the costs that the FCC will consider legitimate. They talk about direct costs. Um, to some people, direct cost is, uh, labor time times a labor rate. To other people, it's, uh, labor cost times a labor rate plus, uh, various adders for overheads, fringe benefits, you know, what have you, you know, so that, that number can go up if, uh, those things are considered. Um, then there's a question of what costs do you consider direct? Uh, you know, if your IT department starts setting up ma- uh, maps of some sort, you know, should that factor in there? Uh, if the planning department hires a new person solely to look at wireless applications, you know, can that, can that be in there? Uh, it's a little bit, again, uncharted, but, um, the opportunity is there to exceed the presumed reasonable fees. What those fees are, uh, for a wireless application, uh, the presumed fee is five hundred dollars for one and up to five locations. Uh, for a, for locations above five, a hundred dollars per location. So we're talking about, I think, really a single application that involves multiple, not, not necessarily a single location, but, single application, but the number of locations is what drives this. You can have one application that covers twelve sites, or you can file twelve separate applications, uh, be the same fee. Um, for, uh, a, a brand-new pole, uh, the application fee can be a thousand dollars. Um, the, uh, another facet of this order is, uh, you know, peer review fees. Typically, people think that a peer review fee is a pass-through. Uh, the municipality votes for it, uh, the applicant pays it, end of story. Uh, the FCC is saying that the wireless industry can look behind the bill. Um, you know, you might get a bill for ten thousand dollars from your consultant, and a wireless carrier is going to say, heck no, I'm not going to pay that. It's outrageous. It should be three thousand dollars, you know, and, uh, so are there really going to be fights about this stuff? Uh, in some cases, yes. I mean, because the consultants are perceived as enemies. You know, they're out, you know, they're, they're not, the wireless industry will call them untrustworthy, and their science is wrong, and there's a lot of bad blood that, that can develop between, uh, the wireless industry and consultants. So it's quite possible that, you know, in some situation, this will, this will become an issue. Um, so you have to make, you have to somehow satisfy yourself that not only does the bill seem right to you, but it looks like it's, uh, a reasonable, based on some, some standard of reasonableness. Um, the, uh, the other thing that the FCC has done is, uh, take a look at aesthetic requirements. They recognize that aesthetic requirements can be imposed by municipalities, but they're now trying to set limits on, on that. And, uh, they ask that the, require that the aesthetic requirements be published in advance. Uh, it makes a lot of sense. Uh, it's, uh, it's easier said than done. I mean, you can, uh, but, but the idea is to try to have as many objective written standards, uh, as you feel are reasonable. Uh, we encountered one rea- one situation where, uh, we're trying to come up with language for, uh, to deal with situations where residents object to having a wireless attachment on a utility pole that's right in their, right in their front yard. Thank you. Um, and, uh, how do you describe that? You know, there, uh, what's right in front of, what's in close proximity to. Um, you have houses where the pole is right in front, but the house is set back from the street. So we had, we, we were trying to hash it out with, uh, a wireless carrier, and we just ca- we just stuck with in front of, in front of and in close proximity to, and that's the best we could do. Um, but that, that's, that's the kind of thing that can come up. Uh, there are all sorts of things out there, you know, camouflaging equipment, uh, requiring things to be built inside the pole rather than, uh, allowed to be on the outside, uh, the height of antennas and, you know, how they're positioned, are they flush-mounted, and, uh, there, there are all sorts of things that, that one can get into, you know, when trying to deal with aesthetic standards. The, um, the FCC says that the standards have to be reasonably directed, uh, to avoiding , uh, intangible public harm of unsightly or out-of-character deployments. Uh, it sounds good as far as it goes, you know, say, yeah, that's right, right on. But then they say that, uh, the standards can't be more burdensome than what the town applies to similar infrastructure deployments. Now, they don't tell you what a similar infrastructure deployment is. I mean, is it an electric company transformer? I mean, is that, is that the, the standard that now wireless is going to be compared to? You know, there, can they come in and say, wait a minute, you allowed that transformer? Uh, so that, that's another unknown. Um, you'd like to think that the rule of reason will apply, that, um, you know, in fact, some wireless equipment is getting smaller. Um, hopefully, it's not something that will become an issue, but it's, whenever the FCC does something that it thinks is precise, it turns out to just create room for litigation. You know, people will disagree over this. Um, another thing that the FCC did in this order was, uh, it changed years of precedent regarding, uh, the uses of municipal property. Consistently, the FCC had ruled that, uh, property owned by a municipality in its proprietary capacity, uh, was off limits. You know, you couldn't force a municipality to make that property available, uh, for a private use. Um, this order says no. Uh, when it comes to the public ways, uh, if the municipality owns streetlights, uh, traffic, infrastructure, the, those are locations where wireless can come in and, and ask to, ask to attach. Um, it's, uh, you know, you can imagine the outrage at the, during the FCC proceeding over that one, but that, that's what they did. Um, I'm sure it's going to be appealed. Um, they also set some limits on fees. Uh, in this case, uh, two hundred seventy dollars a year for recurring costs. Um, that would be, uh, for every, 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 uh, fee, that's a recurring fee, is rolled under that two hundred seventy dollars. That would include, uh, uh, attachment fees for atta- That would include attachment fees for attaching to a streetlight. It could be annual inspection fees. It's gonna vary based on state law, but those would be at least a couple of items. And this is in an environment where a number of cities had negotiated agreements with the wireless industry for recurring attachment fees of $1,000, $2,500 per pole. It's astronomical. And Boston was one of those communities, and with this law, they amended their agreement, and now their fee is $270. So, they had to toe the mark. The... The number of fees that could fall under this is just hard to predict because of permitting, you know, different types of permits. The $500 that I mentioned, I read the order is saying that that covers not just the application fee for the grant of location, but all permits. You know, if there's an electrical permit, an excavation permit, a street occupancy permit. It sounds as if all of that is covered by the $500. So, when you're out there doing your cost studies, don't forget those other permits because you may find that, at the end of the day, the $500 doesn't cover your costs. I mean, you may be able to justify a higher figure. The FCC also came up with new shot clocks for these small wireless facilities. For a co-location, it's 60 days; for, I think, a brand-new site, it's 90 days. It's a short turnaround. The FCC also requires municipalities to accept what they call "batch" applications. You know, this is the 12 locations covered by 12 applications equals a batch, or 12 locations under one application equals a batch. But that's something that's required now. You can't set limits on that. The other thing they've done is they've required that all authorizations are essentially subject to a shot clock. I can't figure out how they can do that because, in the nature of permitting, the wireless carrier doesn't come in and ask for all these permits at the same time. They may not ask for electrical permits until they've had permission to actually construct, you know, from the utility. So, they have the grant of location in their back pocket, but they're not gonna be applying for an electrical permit anytime soon. The pole goes through the make-ready process, and so, some of these things are just not that workable. We're gonna have to deal with some issues like that, and hopefully, between communities and the wireless industry, you know, common sense will prevail, and, you know, these are not gonna be issues. As I mentioned, there were court appeals from the FCC's decision, and those will just win their way through the system. In the meantime, the FCC's orders are effective. There's another thing covered in here called "an eligible facilities request." Not gonna belabor that. There's a lot of material here, but essentially, it's a situation where there are some pre-existing conditions. There's some very limited work that the utility, the wireless carrier, wants to do, and it doesn't constitute a substantial change. All is defined by the FCC, and as long as the applicant satisfies those FCC standards, its application must be approved. You cannot deny it if those federal standards have been satisfied. So, that's coming up actually more frequently because there are existing towers out there and efforts to co-locate to them have come up, swapping out antennas. That's one that's actually gonna be, I think, more frequent for a while than the grant of location situation. So, the... I do have a section in here on radio frequency emissions. I haven't discussed it in detail, but what's in there is... It's really designed to be helpful to anyone who wants to know more about that issue. The... As I said, the FCC standards are old. There was a lot of uncertainty about what municipalities can and can't do. You know, you have these prohibitions by statute. There were petitions filed with the FCC a number of years ago, where both the wireless industry and some municipalities said, "Please tell us what the rules of the road are here. What exactly can municipalities do which is okay, and what's actually prohibited?" And the FCC refused to act on it. They refused to act on it. So, you get into situations where you're trying to craft bylaws, and, you know, you step one step further than the wireless industry likes, and immediately, you're gonna be told you're preempted. So, what I've done is I've included some language from a number of different bylaws and ordinances. I've added some references to, you know, some publications, some of which are issued by the government or by an intergovernmental advisory committee, and others by environmental groups that are, you know, extremely concerned about the radio frequency emission issue. So, there's a lot there. It's a tough issue to address, but there is some ability to at least enforce compliance with the FCC requirements. And there are gray areas, you know, as far as what you can require. But it's, you know, there's material in there for you to look at as you consider these issues. I'm open to questions. Probably went longer than I should have. And no one's eyes glazed over.
Now, what I'd ask, Alan, is you join us on the seat over here. And I'll ask people to come forward to the podium. What we have is an opportunity that's very rare. We're gonna invite the public to ask a question, but it's only about the issue that Alan has mentioned tonight, whether it's a shot clock, whether it's right-of-way, whether it's aesthetic considerations. He's not here to rule on any case that you may or may not have an interest in, or we need any clarification in. But if you've fought an argument or feel you brought forward an argument and you wanna see, discuss the way the FCC has been handling those issues, I would welcome that, but this is not specific to a particular item. But with that said, I would ask first the general public, then I have a few of our staff I'd like to hear from, and then I'll bring it back to the council if everybody's okay with that approach. So, anybody from the crowd like to ask something that is an understanding, you'd like to get more about the FCC rulings or issues in the past, or anything that Alan's brought forward tonight? Please come forward. And again, we'd ask you to sign in and keep it to two minutes.
My name is Anthony Ambrogio. I live in Centerville. And my question, I think you talked about zoning regulations. How... Did the idea of historical districts and zoning come up in the various cases that you've dealt with? That's my question.
Thank you.
Thank you. There have been cases where historic district commissions have been subject to the same federal standards. I mean, they have, in some cases, a slightly different statutory scheme. They issue certificates. I think one is called a certificate of appropriateness, and they have some authority to grant waivers, and they apply, you know, a set of standards in accordance with... Usually, in accordance with state law and then a local bylaw. But they have been... They're part of this process in trying to come up with a code provision or a regulation. You know, we struggled with how do you reconcile, say, a grant of location with, well, we'll say, the zoning context. A zoning permit and the historical district commission function, are there two separate permits that are being requested? Do they operate on different timelines? Both of them theoretically are subject to the shot clock? You know, can one application be conditioned on approval of the other application? I mean, there's things like that. So, they're very much in the mix. The FCC took some actions which tried to exempt some of these small wireless facilities from the federal review process. I don't think that affects the state review process or the local, but at least at the... They tried to take out one layer of federal approvals, sort of on the theory that these things are too small to mess with, you know? I think that's maybe a way of putting it, but I think that's what they were saying. So...
Thank you. Thank you.
Another question from the public. All set? Thank you for coming in tonight. We have Director of Growth Management and our Building Inspector. I'd like to ask, both of you have been involved deeply. I'd like to ask if you have any questions you'd like to ask of our guests.
Mr. President, Town Council members, thank you for your time. Brian Florence, Building Commissioner. I don't actually have any questions. I just... I don't have any questions. I just, as you can see from Attorney Mandel's comments tonight and his research, it's not an easy thing as a permitting authority or an enforcement officer to try to weed their way through, never mind zoning ordinances, but also federal statutes. So, I appreciate the time you took to do this for us and the communications we've had while you were doing it. So, thank you.
That was our Building Commissioner, Brian Florence. Elizabeth, would you like to ask a question? Are you all set? All set? Okay, this is the portion where I open it back up to the councilors. I'll look to my left first. James, Paul? Yes. Councilor Heber?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for your presentation, and thank you for the notes on the radio frequency emissions. But in general, can you tell us how much research has been done and where do we stand with the radio frequencies affecting human beings? And I don't consider the FCC pro the citizens anymore. It's pro-big-business, pro-money. That's the new god. But the end of the day, I get very concerned about a little bit of this and a little bit of that, and then all of a sudden, we have somebody who's got leukemia who didn't have it before. Now, I'm not saying that it causes from this, but with your expertise, if you could help guide us a little bit on where we're at with the research to make sure that people are safe. Thank you.
Yeah, I think... I think, you know, from my standpoint, coming at it as an attorney, I'm more of a bystander. You know, it's... I have to take the law as I find it, and I have to give advice based on the law, how I feel about it personally. I'm very concerned about it. I wouldn't... I mean, there are a lot of... There's an awful lot of literature out there. There are... You know, you see what goes on in other parts of the world, you know, Europe having tougher standards than we have here. Why is it taking the FCC six years to deal with this, and they still haven't done anything? The Intergovernmental Committee that came out with a book, a booklet for advising local officials on radio frequency emissions, you know, the people that put that together are good people. They've been wanting to update it for the past six years, but they're waiting for the FCC to come up with new standards so they can do that. I mean, they recognize that their work, as good as it was, is outdated. And, you know, I mean, I've seen this issue over a number of years. There's just a tremendous amount of mistrust engendered by things like governmental delay. It's... I mean, I don't have an answer in terms of this. I mean, I've put in some references to, I think, like the Environmental Trust, you know, the articles that they've written. There's a lot of backup for their research. You know, it's gotta be taken seriously. But, you know, it's like anything else. It's part of this process that doesn't seem to work very well. So, I can't give you a... I'm sorry, I can't give you an update like, you know, here's the latest and greatest on radio frequency emissions, but I treat it as a very serious issue. You know, there's things like, you know, how far away from the microwave do you stand? Would you walk on a rail trail that's under a transmission line? You know, stuff like that. When I was at the Attorney General's Office, I had no interest in being given a tour of the Pilgrim One nuclear plant. Thank you. No, thanks. And other people may feel differently, but that's where it's at. It's just a state of disagreement, and hopefully, the science will... The law will catch up with the science.
Yes, a follow-up.
Thank you very much. Wonderful response to a, again, very difficult situation. And so, and I know things change slowly, and, you know, try to find a telephone booth now. It doesn't exist, okay? I've noticed that Superman isn't around anymore because there's no telephone booths, but... So... But in your experience, is there any place that you could point to us? If you could advise us as a community to where we might get a glimmer of hope that we might get a reasonable... Some facts. I mean, is there a European country that has, you know, unequivocally said, you know, "It's bad," you know, and therefore, they have stronger regulations than we do? Maybe it doesn't exist. I'm just asking you while we have your presence here. We're blessed.
I don't know. I don't have information to answer that.
Thank you very, very much.
Councilor Beedenbend?
Thank you, Mr. President. There is a huge body of literature that speaks to everything that you're concerned about, and anecdotally, I have a friend who is undergoing treatment for breast cancer, and her oncologist has told her he's seen a spike in young girls, you know, teenagers and early twenties with breast cancer, and it's... They think, they're speculating, it's because of girls putting their phones in their bras. So, you know, the FCC has made it very clear that they will not accept pushback based on environmental factors, but as a municipality, what is... You know, it... What I see happening is them just steamrolling municipalities and doing everything they can to take every right that we have in our municipality as to where things can go and when and what have you. And the second... You know, another point that you brought up, which is also extremely concerning, is in regards to fees. And, you know, I wanted to ask Mark Meln, what our town takes in on permitting fees just out of curiosity, what we bring in revenue-wise in regards to that, because we may completely lose that, or a large chunk of it. I shouldn't say completely because you've outlined what those fees are looking to go towards. But that's something that is extremely concerning. So, I guess it's a couple of comments and one question from Mark, but then also, you know, in general, I mean, it looks so bleak, and I... You know, just curious, you know, do you see some paths forward, some legitimate, you know, options that a municipality can start to work towards to sort of formulate some protections for itself, you know, as we move forward? You know, so, for example, if all of a sudden, that's... You know, there's a main street that has, you know, can... Could legitimately qualify for an historic district that is not currently an historic district? Would that be an extra layer of protection that you could add that might be a wise move? Or would that be seen as effective prohibition? So, just kind of curious as to, do we have any options? I mean, is there any hope for municipalities? Is the FCC really... And actually, it's really the telecom industry really trying to muscle us in a direction that we might not want to go?
Well, my reaction to that last order is probably very similar to yours. The... It just looks like it's a fairly extreme change in... The, it just looks like, it's a fairly extreme change in municipal siding practices caused by that order, or that could be caused by that order. I do think, I do think there's hope. The, for a few reasons. One is that aesthetic standards and safety standards are still recognized by the FCC as a legitimate basis for acting on grant of location applications. Those are standards that can be considered and applied. There is a lot that the wireless industry is willing to accept that hasn't been the source of litigation. They've even, they've come out with some model bylaws of their own, which, I mean, I wouldn't recommend, but at least in terms of some of the elements, you know, they recognize aesthetics, they recognize public safety considerations, and there are many conditions that I think the wireless industry would accept and wouldn't make a federal case out of, you know, it's some of the camouflaging, they've been especially good about that, I think, in larger cities where they have large deployments. So I think, I think there is, there is some hope with that. I'd like to know more myself about the wireless equipment. I think whenever a municipality is approaching this, I think it's really important to have a good source of technical information. I've asked, you know, wireless carriers several times, like, what is this 5G stuff gonna look like? And they say, oh gee, we can't tell you, it's still, like, in design and all this. And that doesn't breed confidence, you know, and what it's gonna look like. But put that aside, we have this FCC order about similar infrastructure. That's a, you know, you can take the position that similar infrastructure is wireless, that a transformer is not similar to wireless facilities. It's functionally different, there's a different system of regulation. So, yeah, I'm not totally pessimistic about that. It's the fear of extensive deployment that I think has some people nervous, you know, just the way these rollouts are described, you know, there're gonna be thousands of these things all over the place, and I think people are rightfully concerned about that, because it doesn't appear that that's been studied, you know, that the effects of that has been studied, you know, from the environmental standpoint. Utilities which own the poles, you know, they apply standards to wireless attachments, some of which are helpful, you know, in terms of municipal interests. The, so there are things that they have to do. The utility industry will tell them that they, certain poles are not available for attachments because they have pre-existing electrical equipment on there that, you know, there's no room, it's incompatible. So, you know, some of the visual clutter issues might get dealt with that way. But it's something that takes some vigilance. I mean, I think, so I do think having a, having a good technical resource, when you consider public safety and aesthetic standards, is a good thing, because when those things are put together, you have to have some knowledge of, you know, what standards are really important for your community. Some people will talk about spacing, you know, oh no, you can't have these things more than 1,500 feet apart. Well, that may not cut it, and it may not matter that much, but, so, those are, those are things where you can get advice, you know, someone will tell you, well, you know, this carrier is not gonna put these things any closer than X number of feet apart, and you might be okay with that. So it's, you know, it's things like that. But the more, the more technical expertise that you have on wireless facilities and these networks, the better off you are when it comes to dealing with permit applications. So you're in a better position to assess what you're being told and to evaluate it. On the fees, I'm not terribly upset about the fees, I mean, I think the FCC threw something to the wireless industry, but it didn't, it didn't go overboard to the extent that it could have. It's not good, but the door is open if you can demonstrate higher costs, and, I mean, I've done a cost study like this for a certain set of assumptions about grant of location permitting. We put together a roomful of people from different departments, and it was like, well, here's the application, what's your department gonna do? What's the planning department gonna do? What's the fire department gonna do? What's DPW gonna do? Who's gonna work on it? What's their hourly labor rate? How much time do you think they're gonna spend reviewing this application? And I think in this case, and I even had some time and money in there for the Law Department, so, so, at the end of the day, you know, we came up with close to $700 direct costs, no loadings or fringe benefits or any of that, and it was done that way deliberately because it was more conservative. And we ratcheted it back to $500, and that was the recommendation that went to the Public Facilities Committee. They begrudgingly approved it, and went to the Finance Committee, they said, they rejected it, they said it was too low, they wanted 750. So I told them, there's an FCC order that's about to come out, it sets a cap on this fee, we don't care. So, you know, you don't want a decision made that way, you wanna have a cost study to back up what you're, what it is you're trying to do. And I think, again, it's, it's not ideal, but, I mean, under state law, you could have a fee that would be challenged as a tax because it was so unreasonably high that it was deemed to be a tax rather than a fee. You know, that's kind of standard. The state has cost manuals, you know, how to develop costs for certain fees permitting. There's a lot of stuff out there to rely on, and I think one of the big questions is the fringe benefits and the adders, whether that's gonna be permitted or not. But, so I think, I think the game is open on that issue, I wouldn't, I wouldn't close the door. On attachments to municipally-owned streetlight or traffic signal, $270 a year is way above a pole attachment rate for these facilities on a utility pole. Basically, they come up with a, again, there's a cost study for this, and it's fairly well-settled under pole attachment law. You could do something analogous for municipal infrastructure. The wood streetlights, concrete poles, for some reason, have been treated differently. Some communities will say, well, we had these poles, they've been here for X number of years, we have no idea what their structural integrity is, we have no engineering records, so if you want to go in this location, you're gonna have to replace the pole at your own expense. And wireless industry has been willing to do that. And then it's like, well, what if the pole gets knocked down? Will you, will you pay to replace it? Yeah, we'll do that. Will you keep a couple of spares around, so if there is a knockdown, you can replace the pole quickly and put your stuff back up, and it will operate, it'll be back and running? Yeah, we'll do that. So if you have concrete poles, up till now, before this FCC order, municipalities and the wireless industry have been managed to work some of these things out for mutual benefit, really. Whether this FCC order will change that, I don't know. I don't know. I think a pole replacement is totally appropriate, assigning the cost of the replacement is just what the utility industry would do if they had a pole that was, couldn't accommodate an attachment and needed to be replaced. Same type of fee would apply. The, you know, the spare inventory, the replacing knockdowns, maybe not, but the replacement of a pole, well, the new pole, I think that would, that would succeed, that should.
Do you have a follow-up? Councilor Beedenbend, all set? Yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Mandel, for your presentation. The question I have is if a town, either by not conforming to the stop clock provisions or by not allowing one of these devices to be put up, are there any liabilities that the town could face other than the fact that that decision could be overturned?
I hate to say a blanket no, I'd say probably no. There were cases in the past where it was claimed that rights under federal law were violated by the municipality, I think it was Section 1983 Actions, I think, was what it was called. And I think the Supreme Court held that municipalities couldn't be liable under that statute. But, you know, there is the, there is the litigation risk, and, you know, it also depends on, you know, how vigorously the town wants to defend itself. You know, if it's one of those things where you get sued, and you say, oh well, you got us, you know, that's a, that's a quick lawsuit, but if, you know, if there's a real battle, you know, then the litigation expenses can get, get higher.
Councilor Snuck, follow-up?
Just to clarify, so the cost would really be undergoing the litigation, but probably very limited risk on any damages?
I think that's right. I mean, I, you can never say never, that's just the way the law is, you know, that someone will come up with some theory that I may not have thought of, and that's what lawyers do.
Yes, Councilor Rapp Grisetti, please.
Thank you for your, your presentation. Just a comment, actually. I think the FCC review of the RFE standards, I think the FCC needs to be put under a shot clock, because if they've, you know, opened it up in 2013 and they're still deliberating, you know, by the time they're done and come to a decision, these will all be in place. And then just one other aside, because we started with osprey nests. In Kewett, a water tower that used to hold cell antennas, 160-foot cell tower, or water tower was demolished, and those antennas were put on temporaries, maybe 65, 70-feet-foot towers, temporary, and there's a very large osprey nest sitting on top of one in the tower. So I don't know if they're gonna be able to move those antennas to the new tower that's been built, which is 170 feet, so, anyway, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any more councilors to my right? Councilors to my left? Councilor Neri?
Thank you, Attorney Mandel. I know this has been dragging on here a little bit, but just to kind of put things into a little bit of a synopsis here. So, if a carrier decides to come into a area, whether it be public or private, and they build a tower, a receiver, a repeater, whatever it is, they install it on a fixture that falls under proper aesthetics, proper safety, proper, all the proper's. There's nothing that the municipality can really do about it, is what I'm hearing, that's what I'm hearing. And if we were to say, under home rules, say, we don't want it, it would go, it would then fall into litigation. Have you seen this happen in municipalities? And exposure-wise, is this something that, that the, the risk to the municipality is too great, too little? Does the, have you seen maybe some of the carriers determine that the pushback is such that they'll just go on to another area for a period of time and eventually recircle back and come? Have you, have you had any experience with that occurring or not? I guess ultimately, is there, are there towns that are in litigation over this exact topic by effectively denying, you know, the installation?
Well, I'll give you a personal anecdote. This goes back sometime in the 1990s. There was a carrier that came to Wayland, Massachusetts, they wanted to go put a tower up in a hill where there was an existing fire tower. You know, they offered to replace the fire tower with a taller tower, they offered to allow the fire department to attach at no charge, and they offered to pay rent to the town, you know, for the right to do this. It sounded like a win-win, but the selectmen had promised the neighborhood a few years back that there would be no tower farm in their neighborhood. So there was like this inexplicable opposition. I mean, if you didn't know the story behind the story, you would just say, you know, what are they doing? This looks like a great spot for an improved tower. So that site was unavailable, it was municipal land, and wireless carrier couldn't force the town to lease the property. So they then went to a golf course, and they found a site there, and there was opposition to it. You could see it, you could see it from the other side of the, canoeists could see it from the Sudbury River. Well, if you looked across from the golf course, there were towers in Sudbury. It was, it was kind of a silly opposition. I looked at it and thought it would interfere with golfers, you know, if you weren't a straight shooter, your ball would rear off and hit the tower, you know, it wasn't that far away from a green. So I, so that didn't work. Then, then they wanted to go on some property, on a state road that was near, private property off of a state road, that was, that was, didn't go over well. The town had a moratorium, then they created a wireless district that was near some transmission lines. At the end of the day, you know, here was this wireless carrier going all over town trying to find a site without any success. Finally, they sued the town. It went to court, it went up to court, it came back down. Resolution? The town allowed the wireless carrier to put up a tower where the old fire tower was 10 years after the fact, where they lost 10 years worth of rent, had litigation expenses, and that was because there was a lot of opposition to any wireless being anywhere. It was like a shell game, you know, go here, go there, you know, and here's another site, and there'd always be a reason for rejecting it. And that's not an outright ban, but it's just making things incredibly difficult to cite anything. And, you know, it's, it's one example, you know, but there are other examples of, let's say zoning. There'll be one area where wireless will be allowed in a town, but if that doesn't help you out with your coverage needs, what good is it? So you apply to go to another location. This instance was a situation where the zoning board said, we don't have any authority to grant you a special permit or variance under our local laws. You know, sorry, we can't do it. So it went to court, the court said, we agree with the zoning board that it was proper to deny the permit based on state law. So far, so good. But then they said, the carrier has shown that this is an effective prohibition, so the carrier ends up with the tower location because, because of that. So it's, again, they're not outright bans, but they're restrictive to the point that, at least in the tower context, the town was vulnerable to that type of a lawsuit. Yeah, they're, I don't know if that helps. Yeah, they're, I don't know if that helps.
Follow-up, Counselor Neely?
So in a nutshell, hands are tied.
In a nutshell, try to follow the law as you understand it to the best you can. I mean, it's a...
Face litigation.
Yeah, I mean, the law is out there, you know, the permitting boards have to make assessments of what they can and can't do. And it's a tough position to be in because, let's face it, not all these facilities are popular, you know? And so you have to base your decision based on zoning law if it's a zoning situation and apply the standards you have and see what happens.
Counsels to my left? Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. President. Alan, thank you for your presentation, great overview. Couple of comments first, then really a question. When I think of the FCC as a federal entity, it reminds me of the NRC, the Nuclear Regulatory Commission. I happen to serve on the decommissioning board that's looking at Pilgrim, and I too, I chose not to take the tour. I think it was a wise decision. But I think what's critical to understand is that when I look at the NRC, you know, I really see it controlled by the industry, if you will, and when I look at the FCC, I see the same. It's really controlled by the industry. From my perspective, probably the last independent FCC chair we had was probably Newton Minow, back to the 60s, who coined the phrase that, you know, TV was a vast wasteland, for those of us that remember that. My point being is that I feel that our hands are tied in terms of what we can and cannot do from federal regulations, but from a moral and ethical perspective, I think we have a lot to say and a lot that we can do. And I say it from this perspective, when I look at the reports that come out on radio frequency emissions, and that's one of the big issues that if I lived next door to the tower, I would be concerned with. I don't care about fees for poles, I don't care who owns the poles, I care about that unseen potential problem that might exist that could cause, as my fellow counselor, Beeden-Bennett suggested, breast cancer in a young woman, or as my fellow counselor, Mr. Hebert suggested, in terms of, we don't know what, for all intents, what this exposure is going to do. I think of just recently in our own town, you know, we're looking at PFOS rules and regulations and how those standards are being lowered so that we might have further problems down the road in terms of the overall water quality that we present to the citizens of this community. I feel the same is probably going to occur with these radio emissions. So I ask this question, from a health perspective, have we, as a town, and I don't know if it's a border health issue, I don't know if it's a licensing issue, but have we done our own studies in terms of the level of emissions that come from this potential pole, this potential steeple on top of the church, in terms of what that will be? And where does it fall within the confines of what the feds say is allowable versus not being allowable? And can we, as an entity, sort of in a David Goliath kind of environment, can we just draw a line in the sand and say, no, we're not going to allow this to happen until we have more research? Or will the FCC come down on us and just rule out of hand, saying, look, it's at this percentage, that below that percentage, hence, our hands are completely tied?
Well, what would happen in that scenario, under current law, if, let's say hypothetically, the town comes up with what it considers a more stringent standard than the FCC standard? You've done your own studies, you've hired experts, and they're telling you that certain things need to be tightened up a bit. What the wireless carrier would do, they would go to the FCC, and they would say, you know, this community has violated, you know, this section of the Telecom Act. They'd bring it to the attention of the FCC, and then the FCC would take some action. You know, they'd make a determination that the town was in violation of federal law. That's what would, that's what likely would happen. You'll see in the, you know, this is, I don't profess to be an RFE expert, I mean, it's a complex subject, but I, one of the reasons I put in some examples was just to show how some communities are trying to inch toward more accountability, either through greater testing. I think there's one example where a community specified the point from which the test is So there, that's a, again, within this area of what does the FCC require, I think there's a need to understand what exactly that means. What is it that the FCC does require? What do these facilities do? And some of the things I've read is that the FCC standards don't really apply that well to pole attachments, you know, things that are put on poles, that they're, it's like a disconnect. I'm not an expert on that, but I've heard that criticism made. I think it's one of those things, it's a struggle for people who are very concerned about the RFE issue. And all you can do is, you know, bring it, bring it to, be public about it, raise cane, you know, raise the issue if you feel strongly about it, take it to the legislature, you know, take it, you know, that type of thing. There has to be some pressure brought to bear on the FCC to update the standards. I've seen polite letters written by public officials to the FCC, please address the RFE standards before you unleash 5G on the public. And they didn't, you know, they've done just the opposite. But it has to be some kind of ratcheted up pressure on, around this issue. It's a, I want to call it civil disobedience, but that's...
Right. Well, I think sometimes civil disobedience is in place, and it's something we should take a look at.
Yeah, I mean, people protest over issues that they believe in, and, you know, it's...
Well, I'm concerned also, I mean, we have an FCC that I've already suggested is probably industry-controlled, not only in terms of appointments, but also in terms of action. And I think of, you know, the FCC just most recently, you know, destroying the whole concept of net neutrality, you know, which sort of made the internet a level playing field, and now, obviously, favoring the same industries that are in the telecom business providing cell towers. So, you know, I would be a strong proponent to suggest that, you know, at some point in time, we as, not necessarily, I'm not speaking for the council, I'm speaking for myself, but from a citizenry perspective, we have an obligation to sit back and say, wait, we need to draw a line in the sand and say, we want to question the standards, especially of radio frequency emissions. Because, you know, where's the scientific literature behind that? Where's the scientific studies that have been done over the past one year, two years, as opposed to what was done many years ago when those standards were put in place? And I just think we have an obligation as a community to do that.
Yeah, I mean, the FCC docket on RFE standards, it's an interesting thing to read because there are a million filings that have been made by people who are seriously concerned about that issue, there are scientists, there are physicians, various interest groups. All that information, to the extent they have it, has been put in front of the FCC. And, you know, these are serious people who are raising a serious issue. You know, it's not a, you know, Chicken Little syndrome by any means, you know, they've looked at the science and they have concerns, and just have to keep pressing the government to address it.
And just one final comment, I'm just curious, we as a town, have we done any radio frequency emission testing on our own at this particular site? Does any of our team have a response to that? Not necessarily you, Alan, because, obviously.
Yeah. That's just a touch out of Alan's field because he's just advising us.
But I'm asking, have we done that, as a town?
We have not. We're using this industry standard, as he points out, and the objectors are not happy with that industry standard just. But that's what's happening as of late. Counselor Cole?
Yes, just quickly, are you aware of any class action suits that have been filed with any AG's office throughout the country that might be challenging this? I mean, we're shackled, and it's unfair. And I know that Mora Healy has been pretty adamant about approaching subjects that, like the opioid problem, and we signed right onto that. And is there any scuttlebutt at all about that that you might have heard?
I haven't. It's not to say that it's not out there, but I think that's a good suggestion, you know, to raise that type of issue with the AG's office, you know, and see what, see if they have any different angle on it, you know, than, say, a municipality would have.
I would suggest that the council take a vote on that and write a letter, if possible, if we have votes positively. Just inquire.
I guess it's my turn, Alan, how I am. Thank you again for coming tonight, we're very grateful for the education we've received. I have three questions that I hope are quick and clean, on the shot clock, the 90-day and the 150 on the new. Either of those can be extended by mutual consent?
Yes.
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 On the public ways, and you're suggesting that we address some zoning, I noticed on page five and six of your handout, you gave us some pretty good definitions. And is this type of, this is almost neutral, obviously, when we talk about radio frequency emissions required continuing compliance with FCC standards. So it's against the idea that we can tighten beyond FCC, but it seems to be in a box. So is that type of definitions, ones that would be upheld in court if we had this type of scenario?
Are these the, let's see, I'm looking at page five.
I'm on page five, it says, the following examples may be incorporated into a bylaw regulation adopted as a bylaw. And it's great because it's got aesthetics, it's got radio frequencies.
Yeah, these are, these are all things that are, they're reflected in various bylaws and ordinances in cities across the country. I mean, they're...
But should I expect that they've been tested to be in place or adopted if we should put together our own zoning on the rights of ways?
Yeah, I think you'd find that, certainly in terms of the standards, clearance is above ground, the National Electrical Safety Code applies to these facilities. There are other federal laws that apply, like these ADA requirements. The aesthetics, that's a tougher one, but I haven't seen litigated. No, you can't make us camouflage the facilities or paint them the same color as something else that's on the pole. You know, the industry has gone along with that pretty much. Radio frequency emissions, you know, that's been in litigation. Pole height, I guess we'll find out. You know, it's certainly something that can be done under state law. I think even under the FCC's definition of small wireless facilities, there was a cap on the pole height. That's the pole plus the antenna, but it's something like 50 feet, you know, so it's kind of tall.
Seanic roads is an interesting one for Cape Cod.
Yeah, the, yeah, it's, I mean, these are commonly found in any number of municipal ordinances, and I can't say I've seen a case where, you know, there's been litigation about it.
Yes, but they seem to be more of a standardized way to approach a definition before you write the bylaw.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, there, one example, let's say, of a safety ordinance is wind loading. What municipality is going to conduct a test for wind loading? Are you going to really ask the applicant to do that? If the applicant is attaching to a utility pole, the utility is going to undertake that.
Yes.
Really, it might be, in my mind, it's a little bit of overkill. I mean, if the utility is lax and, you know, has a shoddy record, that might be another thing, but, you know, it's, there's some things that maybe you don't have to delve into. But again, that wind loading has been a standard I've seen in a number of different ordinances.
My last question is about the fee versus the taxes. You were suggesting they were capped under the new September ruling at $270, and I was wondering if the fees are the same, or do they roll into personal property taxes?
Totally separate.
They're separate?
Yeah.
So there may be another avenue for us to gain revenue by personal property taxes. And the 270 is restricted to a group that they present that they would like to get permitted, or do we have the right to say, it's 270 for every place you intend to set?
It's, again, recurring charges for the use of municipal property in the public way.
Per pole, per se?
Per location, so...
So it's 270 per location, not if I said I want to go down South Street and I'm going to have 12 locations, it's not 270 for the permit of 12?
No.
It's 270 times 12?
Yes.
Plus the personal property tax?
Yes, yes.
Thank you, that's a good clarification. All right, last call, anybody got any questions? We're very grateful, thank you for your time tonight, very informative, happy to have you with us.
Glad to be here and keep optimistic.
These are, this is 13 optimistic people, don't worry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to see you. Why don't we take a one-minute recess, two-minute recess, so, thank you. We'll be back at 10 after the hour, please. We'll be back at 10 after the hour, please. Councillors, the hour has arrived. Madam Clerk, would you take a roll call, please?
Councillors, Crocker?
Here.
Cullum?
Here.
Flores? Rap Grissette?
Present.
Hebert?
Present.
Levek?
Here.
Neary?
Here.
Schnep?
Here.
Stein-Hilber?
Here.
Tinsley? Wallace?
Here.
Beeden-Bender?
Here.
Please make a note that Consul Tinsley had to leave with a family issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, we're on to communications from elected officials, boards, committees, staff, commission reports, correspondence and announcements. I'm looking to the left, yes. I'm starting with Consul Hebert. My right, I'm sorry, it was the left of the, the other left that became right all of a sudden.
I found Council President used to teach aerobics, and so he's good at that.
Consul Hebert, you're first. That's the guy I was looking at, how's that? You're first.
Thank you very much. Just a reminder that tomorrow morning at 8:30, we have the breakfast meeting of Selectman Council's Association of Cape Cod and the Islands is going to be taking place at Seacrest Resort. And that's the day that we're going to have legislators there and some of the key topics tomorrow, again, is continuation of discussion on the Cape Cod Water Protection Fund, looking at the, also in particular regarding the town's ability to designate certain portions for special set-asides. And then we're going to have some input on the state, looking at the issues, again, of housing and zoning. And also, there was a question about coastal resiliency and protection. So I hope if any of you can make it, even if you have not done reservations, I'm quite sure we can fit you in. Thanks.
I'm going to be as tricky as I can be, and I'm going to switch to the left. Consul Levek, any commission reports or statements?
Actually, yes, thank you. Consul Neary was distracting me, I apologize. Anyway, I would actually like to thank all those who responded to my plea to support the Marsden's Mills Village Association businesses and village businesses, and thank the association as well. We had a great meeting last night. And the staff, the town staff that come, has been coming to the last two meetings to inform us, and, you know, it's not an easy task to manage, and I believe everybody's working together with good intent and putting their best foot forward. And I just, just want to thank everybody involved, and of course, keep, keep supporting those Marsden's Mills Village businesses. So they do appreciate it, thank you.
Consul Beeden-Bender?
Thank you, President Crocker. Three things first, I just want to thank our legal department for arranging Attorney Mandel to come here. I think that was very, very useful and helpful, so I appreciate the effort on that part. Wanted to mention Vineyard Wind is doing a sort of a community listening question and answer information session this next Tuesday, March 12th, at 6:30 PM at Town Hall. So I encourage people to come to that. And then the third piece is that I volunteer, as a marine mammal rescue volunteer for the International Fund for Animal Welfare, and there have lately been, there's been a lot of seal activity on our beaches where they haul out and they hang out. And this is really for the public, that it's a very common thing for seals just to pull themselves out of the water and hang out for a few hours or a day, they're resting, especially the younger ones, they need a break from being away from their moms. And so they come out and they just, they need to be left alone. So the rule, the rules of the road are 150 feet minimum distance, dogs on leash, do not approach them, you will stress them out and give them potentially some health issues as a result. And they're, they're very fearful of dogs because they're predators, so we just ask that you, you give the wildlife their space. Thanks.
Consul Neary?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like a shout out to the, to the Barnstable High School hockey team, had a great season, and fell to Duxbury last night in double overtime. And I believe they outplayed Duxbury personally. I think they just ran up against a hot goalie, but cheers to them, it was a good, really a season well played.
Consul Schnep? No. Back over here, Consul Cullum? No. Rap Grissette? Consul Wallace?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, the West Barnstable Civic Association is having their annual scholarship fundraiser this Sunday, March 10th, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM at the Tavern on the Green Restaurant, and that's located in the old Barnstable Fairgrounds Golf Course, Route 149 in Marsden's Mills. There's wonderful food, there'll be live entertainment from Live in Las Vegas and a silent auction. There's a $50 price tag, and if you'd like to make a reservation, you can call Jane Manzelli at 508-375-3352. That's 508-375-3352. Thank you very much, and this is a worthwhile cause and a lot of fun, so I hope everybody that wants to come can. Thank you.
Thank you. You have a very polished radio voice, thank you very much for that. Consul Stein-Hilber, anything? Vice President? I'm all set at this point, so we're on to the orders of the day. What I'd like to do with the council's permission is give our Director of Community Services the first nod for the last two items. So that would be 2019-155, followed by 2019-156. So go deep into your packets, and I'll be looking for, page 65, Consul Hebert, to give me assistance, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is item number 2019-155, and it may be acted upon this evening. Acceptance of a gift in the amount of $4,000 from the First Baptist Church of Hyannis to the Hyannis Youth and Community Center to help fight hunger locally.
All right, first and second, and we're fortunate enough to have our Director of Community Services, Lynn Pointe, with us.
Thank you, Mr. President, and Mr. Vice President, Councillors, Lynn Pointe, Director of Community Services. As Consul Hebert mentioned, this is a $4,000 gift from the First Baptist Church of Hyannis. We have some children that show up at the Hyannis Youth and Community Center who suffer from food insecurities. The HYC C continues to welcome children of any means that, and that don't have the funds to pay for food. This is another way for us to help, help them get a good snack, a good meal. Primarily what this will be doing is paying for meals provided for the after-school program. And what we've found with some of the programs that we've been running where we've provided a meal, there's plenty of food left over so that children can take some home with them after the event. We are extremely grateful to the First Baptist Church of Hyannis for providing us with this generous gift.
Any questions, councillors? Yes, Consul Hebert?
I'd just like to make a comment, and this is a great gift to our, to our people. I just received just today, if you remember at Christmas, I, in honor of all of us, I gave a little gift of food cards to the Barnstable High School. I just got the letter today saying how important that was for families who are really struggling with the food issue. And then I did a similar thing with the Cape Cod Tech, and helping them with an angel fund for students. And the response from them was just overwhelming on how many students are hungry, how many students' families are struggling for food. So this is a wonderful thing, so thank you.
Thank you, Consul.
Any other councillors? Yes, down the end, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Lynn, is, with the $4,000 and with everything else that's going on, is, do you feel that this program is properly funded? Is there more of a need for the community, more outreach needed?
It comes, it ebbs and flows. I can tell you that when the facility first opened, we would have parents dropping their children off, and they would be there all day. And staff was noticing that children weren't having food, and we were finding ways to help get that. You don't want to embarrass anybody, but at the same point, you want to make sure that somebody has a need met. Could we always use more? Probably. The numbers do increase in the summer months, and through Mark Boardley, who's our youth center manager, we were able to get a food program for a lunchtime meal, which is a great program.
I remember that.
Yeah, and, you know, sometimes what we find is on the weekends, because sometimes with some children, the last meal that they have during the week is what they've had at school, and then they go the weekend and they don't get something again until Monday. So if we see something like that, we make sure that their, their need is met.
Do you ever think about when, on something like that, maybe partnering with Cape Kids Meals, or is that the backpack type of thing? Have you ever familiar with that at all? Not to take too much time?
I've heard of it, I myself am not. I can talk to Recreation Director Patty Machado and Mark Boardley and find out if they're aware of it as well.
Yeah, great.
It's called Cape Kids Meal.
Cape Kids Meals, yeah. Tammy Leone is the director.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Vice President Flores?
Just a question, Lynn. Regarding how kids are served in this particular program, they're not identified per se when they're going up for a particular lunch or particular, it's just nobody knows that this is ongoing, that it's covered?
Nobody knows.
Okay, because I remember when I was a school superintendent, one of the issues that we always had was those kids that were on a free and reduced lunch card, they reach a point, especially by the time they get to fifth or sixth grade, where they're afraid to pull that card out to get a free reduced lunch. They're embarrassed, they're full of sugar, and so I want to, that's why I asked the question, so this is a neutral kind of opportunity for kids to just go through the line.
This is, and it's my understanding from talking to the Recreation Director Patty Machado, is that this would be a congregate meal, so it's available for everyone.
Thank you. Any other councillors? I'd ask that you please extend to the First Baptist Church of Hyannis the thanks of our entire council, and hearing no further discussion, I'd call the motion, that is for 2019-155 as written. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstention? Please record that as unanimous. Lynn, if you would stay with us for the next one? Paul, would you finish up that over there on the next page? I believe it's 67.
Sure, this is new business that may be acted upon. It's item number 2019-156, resolve establishing a gift account for Recreation Division Hyannis Youth and Community Center. Division, huh? Oh! Sorry, Consul Hebert.
It looks good on you, Paul, don't worry.
Delivered well, I think I did.
Do I have a second? Yes, I have, please acknowledge my second as well. Again, we're fortunate to have the Director of Community Services, Lynn Pointe, with us. Lynn, please.
Thank you very much. This is to establish a gift account for the Recreation Division and the Hyannis Youth and Community Center Division. We frequently come to you with different grants that we receive. We have had a number of them for the Youth Summit, for the Barnstable Youth Commission, which falls under the Recreation Program. We just did the $4,000 gift from the First Baptist Church of Hyannis, and this will help us, because we can't spend the money until you accept it, and sometimes timing is an issue for us. We would be happy to report through the Town Manager Communications any gifts that we receive, so that you're aware of them, but it would just speed up the process for us, for being able to spend.
Would anybody like to make an amendment that the report goes to the manager as well? Hearing none? Go ahead, so moved, I got it first, do I have a second? Okay, so it's going to be amended, that this will go forward, providing the report goes to our manager. Thank you very much, Consul Schnep?
Thank you. Lynn, would this be a mechanism if people did want to donate and maybe augment the donation that we just accepted for food programs or any other type of scholarships, maybe for?
Absolutely.
Great. And is there any way we could publicize that ability? I mean, I don't know if people really know that there's a mechanism that they could make those types of donations.
I would, Mr. Milne, are we allowed to publicize? We can't fundraise.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion? I have a motion to move the question, all those in favor moving the question? I have a motion and a second to move the question, all those in favor moving the question, signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Any abstentions? That's none. In moving 2019-156 as written, I would ask all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, I'm sorry, we did have the amendment, and I'm sorry, that was my oversight. I would move 2019-156 as amended. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? Make it unanimous, please, record it as unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, we're all done, right? Let's bring forward our Director of Finance and ask you to open your pages to the start of what we know is the capital portion of our funding. It runs somewhere in the neighborhood of 52 orders, and, and we are pleased to have our Director of Finance here to organize that for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, councillors. Mark Milne, Director of Finance, also known as Director of Bean Counting and Number Crunching. I just want to quickly provide you an overview of your capital improvement document that we passed out last week. Lot of good information in here. First of all, why do we prepare a capital budget? Well, these are big dollar decisions that don't occur every single year, so they require an extra level of scrutiny for us. And many of them are financed with bond issues. And those bond issues bind future legislative bodies and operating budgets in a form of debt payments that we have to make back. So some of the decisions that we make will bind future decisions of the, of the town. And it also helps us establish our priorities and make sure that we're in line with other plans, that planning documents that the town has. So we do this in separate process from the operating budget. Part one of your document is going to include a comprehensive list of all the project submissions from various departments. Over the next five years, we have a total of $277 million of project submissions. Eighty-two thousand, eighty-two million in the enterprise funds, 159 general fund, and 36 million in our comprehensive water management and private way fund. So that's all contained in part one of your document, the complete comprehensive list of those projects. Part two of the document is going to go in and explain how we rate and prioritize these projects. We use a couple of different rating systems. The first phase of the rating system, we have a workshop with all key staff involved with implementing and managing capital, the capital program, as well as every department head. And we invited a member of CFAC to join us this year to observe the process, and they'll provide us some, some feedback and their input on what their observations entailed of that process that we used. And we ranked the projects collectively at that workshop. Then we get into the second phase of the rating, and this is where we delve into 10 different criteria that each project is graded against, as illustrated on this table here, and the projects are scored from, using this rating system as well. And then we average to two ratings, and we bring them together in a combined ranking, and you'll see in pages, I think it's eight and nine of your document under part two, the ranking of all the projects that were presented at that workshop. And the ones highlighted here and in the book are the ones that are being recommended for funding in the immediate fiscal year 2020. Then when you get into part three of your document, we go through a process every year where we review the existing appropriations that we have. We have over 100 existing appropriations that we're working off of. And we try to identify projects that have been completed with remaining balances in them. And we've identified four, totaling $180, $860,000 that are left over after the completion of these projects, and we're going to redirect this funding to four projects included in the fiscal year 2020 capital plan. So we're reusing. plan. So we're reusing monies left over from other projects for new projects. We go through that exercise every year, and that's included in part three of your document. Part four of the document, we illustrate for, for illustrative purposes only, what a five-year funding plan may look like. We make a lot of different assumptions to come up with this funding plan. A lot of things could change in years two through five. However, we want, we'd like to try to illustrate what's the capacity that we have within our existing funding sources that we know of, and what could we possibly potentially fund over the next five years. And this is just a summary of what that is. There's more detail in part four. But we're looking at close to $200 million over the next five years in capital projects that we could potentially fund. And that's going to change every year as our assumptions change and different, the economy changes, for example. So, but this is just for illustrative purposes. We like to provide you that. Then part five gets into the details. This is the Town Manager's recommended capital budget for fiscal year 2020. We're looking at bringing, for your approval, for 59 different projects. They total 34, over $34 million in total. We're going to use almost $10 million of cash to fund this program, $21.4 million of new borrowing authorizations, $2.5 million of grants for airport projects, and that $860,000 of leftover money from other appropriations for projects that have been completed that I mentioned earlier. Now, of course, many of these projects, we will, we're always seeking grant funding for all these projects. But it's sometimes it's important for us to have an appropriation in hand and a project shovel-ready, ready to go. So some of these projects involve being, putting us in the position to do that so that we can be eligible for those grants. So April 4th, all these appropriations will be coming forward for the public hearing, and we'll be, make ourselves available between now and then for to answer any questions you may have on the document itself or any one of these individual projects. Thank you.
With that in mind, I know the Town Manager has something to add today, so if I could ask.
Thank you, and good evening. Markell's Town Manager. As Director Milne has pointed out, we have an aggressive capital program in FY 2020. One of the first questions beyond the kind of evaluation, logical decision-type process that we go through in identifying, reviewing, prioritizing, is number one, looking at our mission and making sure that as we move forward with a capital program for our community, we're protecting that unique character of our community, we are engaging our citizens in that process, and that we are doing it in a financially sound manner so that we can continue a very aggressive program. So in embarking on this, one of the first questions I have, especially because I came from a background of overseeing capital, is, well, how many ongoing projects do we have right now? We have 119 active capital projects right now. So then my second question, and we're doing well, budget and schedule on all of those. My second question as we embark on an aggressive FY 2020 capital program is, DPW, what's your capacity to move forward in a similar manner on the 59 projects that we're going to bring forward to you? We're really looking, in many cases, at a 24-month window for moving forward. So if the discussion moves into further than that, especially to commence, we relook at the project and how we might bring it forward. So in some cases, we might just bring forward design funds. We, we may bring capital and design together. It all depends on that discussion. We also sit down and look at the various funding sources that we have to be able to move forward with this, and the timelines that are associated with those. Because many times, we may have deadlines if there's a state grant. State revolving funds certainly have timelines. And so we take all of that into consideration in each fiscal year as we move forward. And the report back from Public Works was they believed that they would be able to move forward in a similar manner, on time, on budget, with existing staff that we have to proceed with this recommended capital improvement program. We'll assess that every year. All 59 aren't just Public Works. Some are airport, some are schools. So, but overall, that's the program that we're looking at. And we have similar discussions with the airport manager and certainly the superintendent and her facilities director. So we're confident in moving forward. We're also confident that as we look at the recommended plan that we have, we've taken into account not only your strategic plan, but our, our wastewater planning, our water supply planning, our dredging program, our school and airport master plans, et cetera, our field study. So that as we're bringing forward projects, they also align with some of the subordinate efforts that we've put in place to be able to move forward with a capital program. Other efforts that we have in place, like some additional, we want to look at two specific locations on the water and three bays to consider for extension of an existing pier and potentially an additional municipal pier. Those will fall on waterways that are scheduled to be dredged. Not only other recreational benefits, not only has there been a need identified in the community, but it also ties in with the grant funding that we're going to be requesting so that we can be looking at things like municipal use and emergency responder use. All of those taking us toward the end of securing, especially over the next three years, we've gotten a million-dollar grant in our first year. It's a 50-50 match scenario. I believe we're requesting 750 this year, and looking for 750, and we were looking for a total of a million and a half. But all of those criteria help us toward that grant. And I believe the state has in place a four-year program to grant dredging projects. So we're taking into account all of that as we look comprehensively at the assets that we're tasked with managing in our community, keeping in mind all of this planning that we're doing, and also working to update the planning. So our capital improvement program will adapt to that as we move forward. It focuses on other things such as economic development, protecting important infrastructure, improved uses of assets. I have said, since I've taken over as Town Manager, relevant to our assets, a simple thought process for everybody to consider as they move forward. What's the purpose of the asset, whether it's open land or whether it's a structure that we actively use every day? What's the purpose? If we're clear on purpose, do we have adequate funding for that purpose, to keep it functional and safe and up to date? If the answer is yes to that, then we continue to do that, because that's what I'm tasked with as your Town Manager. If we don't, then we go into a very different discussion, and we try to understand what's needed. Do we have a purpose but not adequate funding? Do we have no purpose and spending funding? Do we have no purpose and no funding? And then we come up with a scenario to move forward from there. So you will see me having open discussions about this inventory of assets that we've accrued. And in many cases, with no purpose and no funding, the discussion may go to, should we look to dispose of those assets? And fortunately, our Town Council leadership has recognized this as, as a major task in managing our municipality and been supportive in creating of a subcommittee that helps us to give direction, and very critical to this process. And you'll see that continue as we move through this. So we're not accumulators of, of assets, but on the other hand, when we do have them, it is our intent through our CIP process, certainly to make sure that we're clear on purpose and we have adequate funding, both capital and operating, to maintain these appropriately. I think it's extremely critical, and it was brought up earlier about Route 28, but, I mean, Town of Barnstable is a destination for our residents, for our businesses, for our visitors. And, you know, that's written right into your mission, to, to maintain that unique character of our community. When people come here, just like in anything we do in life, the way that we present ourselves is the way that they perceive us. It is certainly built into our capital program, that high expectation, that high expectation from you all and from our staff, from our resident, from our business, and from our visitor. And you will see us deliver on that, whether it's a field, a building, a facility. That is built into the product that we intend to deliver. So in moving forward, Director Milne's given you an outline on the funding that's involved. I do want to point out to you that there are some projects that are not in the CIP that you may say, well, wait a minute, where's that? A couple of them, the Barnstable Hollow Fields and the Payne Black House, both of those CPC-funded projects, those are in the queue. We haven't been before CPC. Those would be primarily CPC-funded, so as soon as we bring them through CPC, we would bring them into council. But I didn't want to do the reverse. It wasn't the logical process to follow there. Roadway and sewer improvement funds going to the Yarmouth Road, Route 28 intersection, we're waiting for Mass DOT to get to a point where we can, both in time and funding, be clear on the request there. And that's the intersection that we spoke about earlier, that they're going to be having the workshop on shortly. But we want to make sure water and sewer, all utilities, all subsurface is in place. So as soon as we have that, we'll be bringing that forward to you. Addix Lane Pump Station and Sewer Expansion, we are listed in the SRF for a little over $2.5 million for that. We do not have an appropriation order in our CIP there. The reason is because our leadership and our staff will be having discussions as soon as, I think, perhaps the week of the 18th, on the financial aspects of moving forward with these sewer expansion projects. We do need to have an appropriation order in place before the end of the fiscal year to secure the eligibility in the SRF, and I'm, I'm confident that we will. But we didn't want to bring something forward without being able to have a very clear discussion relevant to, how is this being paid for? Okay? And we expect to be able to do that in the very near future. And then finally, Centerville River Herring Run System Hydraulic Study. This is something that with, with our past president and, and the residents certainly in and around the Centerville, like Quarket, Long Pond area, had brought to our attention that certainly in high groundwater years, there's some real challenges out there in understanding, not even managing necessarily, but understanding the dynamics of that hydrogeologic system. And so we'll, once we scope that out a little bit tighter and coordinate with the, the state on that, we'll be bringing forward a request to take the existing study and update it, hopefully gain the support of our residents in the understanding of it, and, and then be able to move forward in managing issues that come up pretty much every spring when we have high groundwater. Last year was an extreme high. This year is right behind it. So depending on what happens in the next 60 days, we could have some real challenges and challenging discussions certainly in April and May. So that's just an overview of the projects that you'll see. And I am and our staff is available to answer any questions, certainly. The second reading, so all of this begins for detailed consideration on April 4th. And Director Santos, Katie Service, and Dave Kenyock will be the primary presenters, as we typically do, and we'll have supporting staff here to answer any questions. But in the interim, we're available. So, thank you.
Thank you, Director Milne. Thank you, Town Manager Ells. We're in the fortunate part of the capital improvement budget, and that is where we may be able to use parliamentary procedure on a consent agenda. So I would ask my Vice President to present a consent agenda motion.
Yes, I will move that the FY 20 capital improvement budget consisting of Town Council Orders Number 2019-0093 through 2019-0150, as written to individual public hearings on each order numbered to be held on April 4th, 2019. It's pages two to 64 in your books. And this is one motion I'm happy to make.
I have a first and a second. All those in favor of moving 2019-093 through 2019-150 to a date certain of April 4th, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? I'm hearing none. Please record that as unanimous. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposition? Abstentions? It's unanimous. Thank you.